Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield Council, February 10th, 6:00 PM in the council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks is absent with notice. Councilman Brightwell. Councilman Cruz.
Present.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilman Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
Council President, we have a call.
Thank you. If you could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up on our agenda, we have a number of appointments, and we'll take them as they're listed. So our first appointment is an appointment of a Deputy Director of Business and Economic Development.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I am pleased at this time to recommend on behalf of administration the appointment of Sarah K. Malali to the position of Deputy Director of Business and Economic Development for the city of Southfield. Sarah was initially hired by the city in October 1997, so Sarah's been here nearly 28 years. She holds a Bachelor of Arts in Urban and Regional Planning from Michigan State University. She's also completed all of the necessary certificate requirements of the American Institute of Certified Planners. A request for this position is being made at this time to assist Deputy Department Director Freeman with management of both the Career Center and Business Development activities. As you know, that Ms. Freeman is basically a one-deep position, and as she is called away from the city to conferences and such, Sarah is intimately familiar with her work because they work very closely together. And at one point, business development and planning used to be combined, so she understands fully the requirements for the position. And they've worked together pretty much Ms. Freeman's entire career here very closely. She has a strong working knowledge of business development, and the city, Mr. Zorn encourages succession planning and the need to ensure that organizational needs are consistently met. So at this time, I respectfully requesting on behalf of administration to promote Ms. Malali to the position of Deputy Director of Business Development. The recommended placement is a Management Group Grade 406, and funds will be made available through to the appropriate account by a balance transfer in the amount of $90,000 for the use of fund balance.
Council, do you have any questions? We just need a motion.
Let's chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the appointment for Sarah Malali to the position of Deputy Director of Business and Economic Development effective February 10th, 2025.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Brightwell, to approve the appointment of the Deputy Director of Business and Economic Development of Sarah Malali as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Do you want to say anything?
I just thank you very much to Council and to Mr. Zorn. You know, I've been a very proud employee to be here for the last 28 years, and I'm excited about this next chapter in my career. And, you know, I've always worked very well with Shelley, and I think we'll be able to exchange information and, you know, be able to complement each other, and I'm hoping to provide, you know, more years of service to the city. I'm very proud to be here, and thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I just want to tell the audience, we'll be swearing the people in succession for the appointments tonight, so Sarah Malali is first. Sarah, congratulations. I say your name. I solemnly swear or affirm that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Deputy Director of Business and Economic Development in and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for breaking it up too big. Turn away from me. This is your call. All right, thank you.
Congratulations again.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we have an appointment of the Deputy Director of Public Works.
At this time, I'm pleased to recommend the appointment of Mark Ragsdale to the position of Deputy Building, excuse me, Public Works Director for the city of Southfield. Sorry, I have the wrong appointment letter. But Mr. Ragsdale brings to us a wealth of experience and knowledge. He holds all of the credentials necessary for the role to include the S1 water license. I think Mr. Siddique is here, and I'd like to have him come up and speak to the experiences and why we've asked for this appointment. We are recommending a base wage in Management Grade 406, excuse me, 408 for Mr. Ragsdale. And Mr. Siddique?
Yeah, so Mr. Ragsdale is, he has a master's degree in public administration, and he has served, he has come through the labor ranks, so he started his career as a water maintenance worker at Brownstown Township, rose through the ranks there into management positions, and he has served in DPW director roles and other similar management positions at multiple municipalities and organizations, including the Great Lakes Water Authority. So his wealth of experience and expertise really, we feel, will be greatly beneficial to the city of Southfield and the Department of Public Works particularly. So we're requesting that Council approve Mr. Ragsdale's appointment as Deputy Director of Public Works.
Any questions, Councilwoman Hoag? No questions? Any other questions? Okay.
I move that we approve the administration's request for appointment of Mr. Mark Ragsdale to the position of Deputy Director of Public Works effective February 10th.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, for the appointment of Deputy Director of Public Works, Mark Ragsdale, as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Can we do the constable right now as well, just to, and then do it all together?
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we appoint Mark Ragsdale as the city constable.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to appoint the Deputy Director of Public Works, Mark Ragsdale, as a city constable. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
We will now, oh.
Good evening, members of Council, Mayor, City Manager. I'm very excited to be here. Southfield is a wonderful community, and this is a great opportunity for me to serve the residents and bring to the city my years of experience, and I look forward to working with the Director and seeing his vision through.
Thank you. We'll have the city clerks swear you in, and then we'll shake your hands.
We can do a joint oath for the Deputy Director of Public Works and the Constable. Let's say on top.
All right.
Raise your right hand, sir. I solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
Or affirm.
Or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Deputy Director of Public Works and City Council in and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and State of Michigan according to the best of my ability. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations again, sir. All right. Next, we have a number of appointments from the mayor.
Good evening, Council. Tonight, I'm before you for several reappointments, and the appointment of Janelle Speed Hale to the City Center Advisory Board. I know that also on the list is reappointment of Bruce Collins to the Library Board, who cannot be with us tonight, but reappointment to the Library Board of Thalia Maxwell, who's here. Ms. Maxwell, you want to come forward? And also, a reappointment to the Downtown Development Authority of Dr. Stephen Craig. He is out of town and cannot be here this evening. And then the reappointment to the DDA of Greg Easterly, who is with us. Mr. Easterly, if you want to come up. So, we haven't met, we just need to talk to you on the phone, so I'll start with Ms. Speed Hale first. She has worked for the Eaton Corporation for many, many years, and we've always had on the DDA Board, as you know, Eaton Corporation has a lot of property down Civic Center Drive and is in, well within the city center, I said DDA, didn't I? City center district. So there have been some leadership transitions, so we didn't have a representative on the City Center Advisory Board for a while from Eaton Corporation. So I'm very pleased tonight to bring Janelle Speed Hale before you to fill a vacancy on that board. So we're asking for her appointment. And then to the Library Board, Bruce Collins has served, his term is up and would like to be renewed, and the same for Thalia Maxwell, who is a Library Board member for the last three years, correct? And then on the DDA, Mr. Easterly is the general manager of Fox Two, and filled a partial term, so he's back before you for a reappointment to a full term on the DDA Board. As you know, Channel Two is within, is a major employer, has a 40-acre property, a nine-mile road. It's a, one of the larger businesses within the DDA, so personally, I'm very pleased that Mr. Easterly was able to, he's a busy man, running a station, but very pleased that he has agreed to serve and continue to serve on the DDA Board. So, Mr. President, I am looking for support from the Council for these, this appointment and the reappointments.
Councilman Hicks?
Present.
Go.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the appointment and the reappointments as presented by the mayor for the following. The appointment to the City Center Advisory Board for Janelle Speed Hale, the reappointment to the Southfield Library Board, Bruce Collins and Thalia Maxwell, the reappointments for the Downtown Development Authority, Dr. Stephen Craig and Greg Easterly.
Support. We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Cruz, for these five appointments as presented. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and the clerk will perform her duties, and I'll step aside.
Well, congratulations, everyone. I'm going to speed this up a little bit and just read the oath one time, and you say your names, but I will announce your positions individually. Okay? So, please raise your right hand and say your names. I.
Hi, hi.
Your name.
Thank you.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
I want to read it all, then at the end we'll say.
Yeah.
Okay. Or affirm I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of the Office of the City Center Advisory Board, the Library Board, and the Downtown Development Authority on this day, February 10th, 2025.
I do.
I do. Thank you. Ms. Maxwell, you start first.
Thank you. Thank you. Speed? I've never met another speed other than people on my way to. Oh, wow. Don't look that bright, right? Thank you. Mr. Easterly?
All right.
Thank you, sir.
There you go. Don't want to get into it twice. No, 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 it's always, it's interesting.
Have a great story on the hall station.
Okay, anytime. Do I need to go up here and do the round?
I assumed it was you. Okay.
This is the best part. Thank you for your service.
All right. Next, we have two presentations. The first presentation is the Food Waste Elimination Study.
Good evening, Council. This is Suzanne Youssef, Sustainability Planner with the city of Southfield. Today, I proudly present the nation's first food waste elimination study to be adopted by city council and support for an implementation project. Before I get started, I'd like to point out some key project contributors. The project leadership, and it would have not been possible without the support and direction of Danielle Todd, Executive Director of Make Food Not Waste, the nonprofit who provided this opportunity for the city of Southfield, along with her consultant from Giffords Webster, Stephanie Osborne. They have met you all before, and they were not able to be here today, but we will go through the essentials of the study. Key support from Southfield staff as well, Mr. Fred Zorn, Mr. Terry Crowe, Mr. Thomas Payson, and Alex Bolan. So just a brief recap for everybody. This study goes hand in hand with our Sustainable Southfield Initiative, trying to bring awareness to all the great work that the city has been doing for many years and bringing new opportunities to the city. So we've been continuously working on our trails and pathways, placemaking, including artwork and the various amenities for our residents and visitors and business community. Our Sustainability Action Plan also goes hand in hand with the Food Waste Elimination Study, in particular, the Materials Management Section. Food waste is a critical issue for the climate crisis, and it will be incorporated in our Sustainability Action Plan. We hope to have this plan complete by the end of the year. And just as a reminder, we are, you know, proud to have all of these awards secured last year. The Michigan Green Communities Program awarded us a gold designation. This year, while we renew, they actually have food waste elimination categories, so I'm pretty sure we'll be able to score some additional points as we move our way towards platinum. We were acknowledged by the Mayor's Climate Protection Awards as an honorable mention, and finally, we are a charging smart bronze community for the amount of EV chargers we have in the city. So let's dive deep into the blueprint to zero food waste in Southfield. This plan, if adopted, will be available on our Sustainable Southfield website, available for residents, business community, really anyone who's curious about food waste and how they can contribute to minimize and ultimately eliminate their food waste for the sake of environmental reasons and helping our community who are food insecure. More team members that contributed to the plan, we've had an overwhelming amount of expertise who are trained in the food waste industry contribute to this plan. The funding was completely 100% grant-funded through the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy, and we did work with neighboring communities who are going to be following in our footsteps to develop their own food waste elimination plans as well. So kind of to recap the timeline of this study, we came before council in December of 2023 to seek approval to move forward, which it was granted. We began the study in January of 2024. We had originally planned for the study to be concluded in September. However, due to the acquisition of GFL by Priority Waste, a lot of unknowns were there, so we had to wait on a lot of data until Priority Waste kind of was established as the primary hauler here in the city. The project was completed in December, and now we come before you for adoption here on February 10th. So this is just food waste at a glance for the city of Southfield. On a national level, 40% of all food is wasted. If we hone in on Southfield, 46% of food waste here in the city is made by the residential sector, so that's all single-family homes, multifamily homes. They are the highest contributors of food waste in the city, which is very ironic considering we have 9% of the population who is food insecure. So the study explores all these different sectors and what we can do to redistribute food, you know, compost food to make sure it doesn't end up in our landfill and produce those harmful greenhouse gas emissions. So when you flip through the plan, you will see something like this. This table will be kind of a reoccurring theme outlined in the five sectors that are in the plan. So there will be a section on food waste at residences, food-based businesses, schools and institutions. Institutions means anywhere like a hospital or a large facility that produces a lot of food waste, offices and small businesses, and then anything that is owned by the city, like municipal facilities and parks and public spaces. So each table will outline a strategy, a sub-strategy, and a timeline for completion. So this will keep us on track when we implement the plan and when we reevaluate, you know, a year, two, three down the line of, you know, how much we have accomplished over time. These are just some estimated costs of how much it would take to 100% completely eliminate food waste, and just to have everyone understand that that was the scenario, the original intent that Eagle had set before us. So completely theoretical, but the study was analyzed and implemented as if it could happen. Now, this $4 million, 4.7 million, that is budgeted for, you know, all the food waste strategies, that is not for the city to take on. There is a greater breakdown in the appendancy of the plan of who would be responsible for what costs. But just as a quick highlight, it would be year one, you know, separated into what it would cost for food businesses, schools, and institutions. The city would fall under supporting strategies to some extent of some of our budgeting strategies for the next few years to help implement those goals. Again, they have the list of key players who would be, you know, involved in making all of this happen. Make Food Not Waste would be the lead nonprofit on most of these strategies. for residents, business community, really anyone who's curious about food waste and how they can contribute to minimize and ultimately eliminate their food waste for the sake of environmental reasons and helping our community who are food insecure. More team members that contributed to the plan. We've had an overwhelming amount of expertise who are trained in the food waste industry contribute to this plan. The funding was completely 100% grant funded through the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. And we did work with neighboring communities who are going to be following in our footsteps to develop their own food waste elimination plans as well. So kind of to recap the timeline of the study, we came before council in December of 2023 to seek approval to move forward, which it was granted. We began the set, the study in January of 2024. We had originally planned for the study to be concluded in September. However, due to the acquisition of GFL by Priority Waste, a lot of unknowns were there, so we had to wait on a lot of data until Priority Waste kind of was established as the primary hauler here in the city. The project was completed in December, and now we come before you for adoption here on February 10th. So this is just food waste at a glance for the City of Southfield. On a national level, 40% of all food is wasted. If we hone in on Southfield, 46% of food waste here in the city is made by the residential sector, so that's all single-family homes, multifamily homes. They are the highest contributors of food waste in the city, which is very ironic considering we have 9% of the population who is food insecure. So the study explores all these different sectors and what we can do to redistribute food, you know, compost food to make sure it doesn't end up in our landfill and produce those harmful greenhouse gas emissions. So when you flip through the plan, you will see something like this. This table will be kind of a reoccurring theme outlined in the five sectors that are in the plan. So there will be a section on food waste at residences, food-based businesses, schools and institutions. Institutions means anywhere like a hospital or a large facility that produces a lot of food waste, offices and small businesses, and then anything that is owned by the city, like municipal facilities and parks and public spaces. So each table will outline a strategy, a sub-strategy, and a timeline for completion. So this will keep us on track when we implement the plan and when we reevaluate, you know, a year, two, three down the line of, you know, how, how much we have accomplished over time. These are just some estimated costs of how much it would take to 100% completely eliminate food waste. And just to have everyone understand that that was the scenario, the original intent that Eagle had set before us, so completely theoretical, but the study was analyzed and implemented as if it could happen. Now, this $4 million, 4.7 million that is budgeted for, you know, all the food waste strategies, that is not for the city to take on. There is a greater breakdown in the appendancy of the plan of who would be responsible for what costs. But just as a quick highlight, it would be year one, you know, separated into what it would cost for food businesses, schools and institutions. The city would fall under supporting strategies to some extent of some of our budgeting strategies for the next few years to help implement those goals. Again, they have the list of key players who would be, you know, involved in making all of this happen. Make Food Not Waste would be the lead nonprofit on most of these strategies to connect us to grant funding, other organizations who will help us implement these, these projects. Lots of city staff and departments, it's going to take a lot of support from various roles to, to help us move forward with this. Food rescue organizations are going to be key, and lots of public education. So our city communications departments are really going to be key to get the message out for everybody. Some of the challenges we've encountered, school participation and student engagement. So going with Southfield Public Schools, staff are overwhelmed already with the day-to-day duties of what it takes to run a school. It was very difficult to reach out to the school board and have them have a conversation with us regarding what they could do at a school level. Lawrence Tech, we had piloted a small food waste project there before this study even happened, and some of the feedback was these, the kids are just not engaged enough, so we have to reevaluate the strategies on how we can educate them and get them to participate in sorting their trash in the lunchroom. Public engagement with the business community has been difficult as well. We've tried to kind of cold-call people. That did not work out well, but I believe that the nonprofit was able to reach out to a few businesses and garner some of their, you know, challenges on why they wouldn't participate in the study. And then, of course, municipal staff and budget is always a continuing, you know, challenge to find people who will be able to take this work on. Lessons learned during this process, not all strategies are going to be suitable for one community. So specific to Southfield, it's going to be very difficult to permit additional soup kitchens in the city. I think our zoning doesn't really allocate for that, so we put that in the section of the plan where strategies were explored, but not feasible in the city. Banning organic waste completely from garbage didn't fly well when we had some public engagement sessions. People don't want to feel shamed into, you know, breaking their habits or doing something that they shouldn't do, so we need to explore these strategies with a more positive mindset. Similarly, public education and public engagement were critical in this process. We got a group of residents to come in for a couple of sessions to understand what works best for them in terms of collecting food waste, and we found that convenience is key. So if we decided to start a curbside program, they would be very much interested in participating, and we would probably get the greatest result in doing so. And then also just understanding our governing, governing body, our ordinances, our policy changes, what would be, you know, feasible here to make those policy changes and move forward with some new programming. So we're going to highlight some ongoing and future food waste efforts in Southfield. So again, prior to this study even happening, I connected with Make Food Not Waste in hopes to get Lawrence Tech involved in the Plate to Planet Program. It was highly successful at Oakland University at a conference I attended, and I hope to have accomplished the same goal, but we hit some, you know, challenges with engagement, getting, you know, the cafeteria onboard with it. So while this wasn't initially successful, we are going to try to have another round of this Plate to Planet Program this year, and hopefully we'll have a little bit more success with that. The city hosted its first community feast in partnership with Make Food Not Waste. It was held here in the pavilion. The event was intended to inform residents about food waste. They brought in some professional chefs, and they brought experts in the food waste industry to give residents or anybody who attended some tips and tricks on how to cook food and be able to store it properly for longevity. It was a family-friendly event, there were kids, there were people of all ages there, and hopefully we're able to do it again this year. And finally, this is the potential pilot project with your approval to move forward. We'd like to pilot this. This is a circular economy grant from NextCycle Michigan. It is intended to explore addressing food, excuse me, food waste in multifamily housing. The pilot would be approximately six months to evaluate participation with outdoor compost bins. We would hand out indoor food recycling bins for people to store their leftovers and be able to dispose of them at nearby collection facilities. The expected participation would be about 1,000 residents. So if all goes well, we would hope to expand this to other parts of the city as well. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. I know it's a lot of work, and hopefully there, you know, we're seeing some good results and we can get over some of those humps. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Mayor?
When, when we reviewed this last week, I meant to ask you, how oft, it's a weekly collection, correct?
So if we decide to do a curbside program, we would have to reevaluate our contract with Priority Waste and hopefully get it onboard for a weekly collection.
Okay. I, I'm thinking particularly of the, the containers that are not at the residences but are public sort of litter.
For the implementation? For this?
Yeah, that, outdoor compost bin.
Yeah.
Obviously, that would have to be monitored pretty closely.
Correct, yeah, and our partnership with Make Food Not Waste, they would be taking that on. I believe they have some composting haulers lined up for this pilot to be able to empty the, the big belly bins. So these bins, we have these actually at the municipal campus for recycling and trash, so we would be ordering the compost version of those bins at select areas.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for the presentation. I just want to reiterate and to stress the importance of reaching out to the neighborhood associations and make sure you get good pertinent feedback from them, because I'm sure they will be very helpful.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and I know later on in our consent agenda, we, or we asking the council to approve the grant, so.
Thank you very much.
And participation, thank you. All right. And then we, our next presentation is a presentation from the Wildlife Commission.
Good evening, Council. The Wildlife Commission thanks council and the Board and Commission Subcommittee for this opportunity. You created the Wildlife Advisory Commission in 2020. They were assigned to work collaboratively with residents, elected appointed officials, and other communities to address wildlife issues in and around Southfield. They first met in January 2021, and ironically, the opportunities for collaboration were pretty sparse. And that's because Southfield was ahead of the curve as far as other cities, and nobody else was doing the kind of efforts that we were at the time. That changed in 2022 when the Southeast Michigan Urban Wildlife, or Deer Commission was formed, Coalition, and that is local, state, and county governments working together to formulate plans to deal with primarily the deer. Within the city, the Wildlife Commission has presented at the Martin Luther King Task Force Celebration in the Pavilion. They've also taught at the backyard wildlife fall raising classes in the library, not quite wildlife, but it does get people out with the wildlife a lot more than sitting home watching TV. They also have monthly meetings. They are the second Tuesday at 6:30 in the conference room A off the Pavilion. That's a more relaxed meeting where residents have more time to talk about wildlife issues and interact with the commission than they do, for instance, at council, where you have a lot of other issues where you have to address. That's 6:30, second Tuesday of the month. The commission is not new to presenting to council. In fact, their primary task is to present recommendations to council every June. I think a lot of people look at the June 2024 recommendations because that was the first time the commission included a call for deer with caveats. Professionals, safe and humane is practical. Deer goes to those in need, the venison, and in collaboration with nearby communities so we're not wasting our time or sacrificing the deer needlessly. But I'd like to talk briefly about the 2023 report to council, which was much more extensive and included two, I think, very important recommendations. The first was that an employee be assigned to address wildlife issues within the city. At present, people call the mayor's office, they call my office, they call the police department, sometimes it gets to the commission, sometimes they can get with the resident, but sometimes it doesn't, and sometimes it falls between the crack. We don't, cracks, we don't need a full-time person to address wildlife 40 hours a week, but we need someone to know that they and their department are responsible for coordinating these issues with elected appointed officials, the residents, the deer commission, and other communities. I think that's a very important recommendation. The other recommendation that they've ma, made was habitat restoration. In 2017, we contracted for a deer browse study, and what they found was that the deer were decimating our native wildlife and allowing invasive species to take over. Basically, you will never have new oak trees or new natural trees because the deer love them, and there's just too many deer right now. So when people talk about deer, it's not just do you support wildlife or not, it's you have to look at the bigger picture, it's all our flora, fauna, and wildlife. Another thing that I've asked Mr. Zorn to do is to put a small line item in the budget for the Wildlife Commission. For instance, when they make public presentations, they buy their own supplies. So hopefully, Mr. Zorn will put that in, hopefully the mayor, they'll be there for you to rec, to consider at one time. If there are any questions, I'm more than happy to address them.
Council, do you have any questions? Council Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, and John, I want to thank you very much for this program, and just for the general audience, this is a new program for council. It was initiated by the board and commissions that we will ask each, each board and commission in the City of Southfield that is listed on page five of our calendar. We will rotate each one monthly to have them make a presentation to council. And the reason for that is to, one, to let the citizens know that what is the backbone for the City of Southfield, all our boards and commissions. And before I go further, let me highlight that the members of the board and commission committee is Mr. Hicks, Councilman Hicks, and Councilwoman Haynes. We initiated this from the standpoint of making sure that the citizens understand all our boards and commissions, they're, they have a mission. And also that if you're interested in joining a board and commission, just reach out to, to the council. And as you can see, as we go along, each one will be making a presentation to council. And just as a, and just as a heads up, next month, we had the board of review set up to make a presentation similar to, to John's presentation tonight. The board of review, and if you, if you're interested in your taxes and how your taxes are created and how you might get some amendment to it, please tune in next month to the board of, for our presentation on the board of review. And that's just a heads up of why, what we're doing here. But John, it was excellent presentation, I think it was very thoughtful and it was insightful. And I'm not sure you, and maybe I missed it when you brought it up, what, what is the intent now with respect to calling of deer? And or is there any work on that?
Sir, that is the big question, I understand. Well, first of all, we understand the Wildlife Commission is advisory, they advise the council. It will take your action to make a change in that, but although I cannot speak for the Southeast Michigan Deer Coalition, it wouldn't, I believe there's some consideration of a pilot study. I've already expressed that we would be interested in participating, perhaps a pilot call. I can't speak for the coalition at all, though, and if that happens, then I will be presenting that to you. If nothing moves forward with the coalition, then eventually I will have to present something for the city to go forward on its own, although even the Wildlife Commission was against that because obviously you create a vacuum. What happens? It gets filled with neighborhood deer from Farmington Hills and everywhere else. So hopefully, I will be presenting something to you one way or other. I would say hopefully this fiscal year, but I can't guarantee, and it's, we're a member of the coalition, I cannot speak for the coalition, so that's a little hesitant on that.
And I want to dominate this, but one other question, John. As a citizen, what can a citizen do other than just observe? And I don't want to put you on the spot, I probably could have asked this last week, but what can a citizen do with, with respect to wildlife other than observe?
No, sir, that is a great question, and I know some of you have heard this before, but I think it's worth mentioning again. There are two limits. There's the ecological carrying capacity, how many deer the area will support physically, and then there's the social carrying capacity, and that is how many deer we as a community can live with. As long as the social carrying capacity is above the environmental capacity, it doesn't matter how many deer you have, you will never have a problem. If the social care, carrying capacity is lower than the environmental, then you will, it doesn't, again, it doesn't matter how many deer you have, you will always have a problem. So one of the things the commission wants to do is to do more education. You know, as a, as one of your residents who sat and watched the deer eat what little greenery I had in my front yard, I understand the concern. And some of the things that we as a commission would like to help the residents do is learn more about what you can do in your yard to prevent the deer damage, and what can be done as far as deer accidents. I mean, right now, the primary risk to deer lives are cars. So what we need to understand, what the residents need to understand, for instance, deer are active during rut in the fall. That's all they're thinking, they're not thinking, they're just running all over the place, that's just how it is. Another thing is deer travel in line. So if you see one deer and you say, whoa, I just missed that one, no, there's another one coming. That's something people have to keep in mind. But what the coalition wants to do is help people understand. Sorry, I think I'm listening to the council meeting on my phone. But what we would like to do is help educate the residents on things they can do, and it's more than I can touch on this meeting, this was just a couple of things, and that's why we're going to be talking to Mr. Zorn about a little bit of a budget, because we'd like to do more outreach. It's not specifically their job, their primary job is to present recommendations to you, but this is a hard-working commission, they want to be more involved, and they want to reach out more. Thank you.
Thank you. And John, I want, I really want to thank you for your leadership with this and your participation, and the night's presentation was informative and it's kind of basic, down home, basic info for the, our listening audience to, to soak in, I really appreciate it, and thank you for your participation in, in the, it's, it's always been the city liaison for this advisory committee. Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, anything else? All right. Thank you very much, we do appreciate the, the work that the Wildlife Commission does, and we look forward to getting more ideas generated and.
Thank you, sir. I hope to see more residents, second Tuesday, 6:30 PM, conference room A, which is off the Pavilion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, before we get started, for anyone coming to the mic, they're not working too good, everybody has to speak up. I can barely hear you guys down there as well, so if we can all speak up, please.
Yeah, they're.
But I couldn't hear Mr. Brightwell, I could barely hear.
Cable is working on the mics.
I asked Mr. Hall to turn up the volume already, maybe a little more.
Or just if people could ensure to speak directly and then as loud as they can.
All right. All right, next is our communication portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules and procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employer, city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you signed up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be warranted. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please be respectful to each speaker, and if the council does respond to your comments, it will be after communicate, after everyone has had a chance to speak that has signed up. Our first speaker is Andrew Lockhart. Okay, all right. Myron Thomas.
Hello, my name is Myron Thomas, can you hear me?
Yes.
Is that good?
Loud and clear.
Thank you.
I had a few questions. Question number one is, what specific ordinances or changes are you going to immediately make to allow relief of the city residents to compost their own, their own waste? Right now, I am instructed by the city of Southfield ordinance department to remove my compost from my yard. It's all inside of the current litigation between me and the city. And I've been composting for the last three years, and I've been told to remove them. That's number one. Number two, what is the city doing to allow light agricultural equipment on agricultural property? My home is on, is an RA which allows for agricultural uses, yet by the city of Southfield, I'm required to remove my tractor from my home because it's considered outdoor storage. But I have to build a shed, but I can't build a shed, anyway. Next, what is the city doing to promote and allow for your residents to grow their own food year-round? As you know, we live in a desert, a food desert, I think you've mentioned that. Right now, you are not allowed to, to build your own greenhouse without paying the city of Southfield to build your own greenhouse. What relief are you doing right now to allow your constituents to be as self-sufficient as possible? I don't know, but I've been here because I've asked many questions like this, and I'm asking them directly now. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Greg Keeler.
Last week, Monday, you had a council meeting. In that council meeting, the people that came there could not hear, could not see. So that seems to me like an open violation of Open Meetings Act. We could not sit down, we didn't have any place to sit, so if you came in there with a disability or anything like that, there was no place for you to sit in there. The tables or the chairs are too close together, so half of you wouldn't be able to walk between them. I think this needs to be fixed, or you need to have all your meetings over here where there is room, where we can come into it. You're going to have your budget meetings, it shouldn't be over there, where y'all have space to sit at, we don't. Have you received anything about Circle Drive, or have you asked? It's been two months now since I sent the foyer in. Why not? This is why we need to have districts instead of general elections, so that y'all are held accountable to us and not just sitting up there not really doing anything. Now, the other thing I partially heard in that meeting was, at the point of sales of my house, or 700 some odd people, they're going to have to tie into your sewer line. One problem I got is, y'all don't even know where the tap-in is at. So you increase our money for having to find your tap-in. One, where's the sewer line at? Y'all don't even know that. Y'all don't have correct drawings or anything else, y'all don't care about that. Two, if they need a grinder pump, are y'all going to pay for it, or they don't end up with it in their homes? And people that already have grinder pumps in their homes, are y'all going to be paying for it? And your ordinance says that is supposed to be you. The watering for them, is that also going to be on their bill? So all these things are, you'll add up and start depreciating their property value by about $125,000 because we just lost it, because you changed everything. And if we had somebody up there sitting on council from those areas, they would be fighting for us. But now, we don't have anybody because you are all general. So we need a change. We need for you to think about what it is that y'all doing before you implement it. What is the ramification for it? And then, as far as us paying property taxes, our property taxes should go down, because ours went down on Southfield because there is no sewer line on there. You have just depreciated all the values of those homes. So think about what you're doing and move slowly. We should not have to go back in that room, and there's no room or space for us.
Your time is up.
Or I will be sending something that you are out of order as far as the Open Meetings Act.
Great, that concludes our public comment. The first speaker addressed some concerns with litigation with the city. We will not comment on litigation at this time, but there are some things that the Legislative Committee can look at to make the, based on some of the comments that were made about greenhouses and things like that, the Legislative Committee can take a look at those, and Councilman Cruz, who heads that, did say that he would add that to a future meeting. The last speaker did ask about, mentioned the meeting last week. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend due to a last-minute issue, but the council is working on figuring out either more space, microphones, we are working on making sure that there is space for everyone, and everyone can hear and see the presentations. There was also a comment made about a foyer request, about a sewer line on Circle Drive. I know that there is currently an answer being generated, but I will give a, an answer that I did see about the sewer line, and the city has not spent any money on placing or removing a sanitary sewer line on Circle Drive. There have never been, there's never been a sanitary sewer line on Circle Drive. There was also a comment made about council members not caring if we don't live in a neighborhood and, or not fighting for residents. I just want to comment, and I think I'm going to go out on a limb and speak for all of my colleagues here, we, even though we are all elected generally, we all care about the city. There are over 70,000 residents here in the city, there's a number of things that we have to look at, we have to decide on, we have to make decisions on for 70,000 people. There could be one block, one neighborhood, who may not have the same issues as another neighborhood or another block, but that does not mean we don't care. We have, we have to look at the city as a whole, and we have to look at making those decisions based on available resources, available manpower, available budgets, and again, based on the, the greater good. We do, we do look at neighborhoods, for example, with roads, we, we look at the worst-conditioned roads and work with our water and sewer department and try to double-team sewer and water main replacement to fix those roads if they're in poor condition versus a neighborhood that may not need the water replacement right away, or may not have as poor road conditions. The city is just over 26 square miles, we have a lot of decisions to make, and to say that we don't care is just false and untrue, because we do care, we just have a lot of decisions that we have to make and base, base things on the overall city, not on one neighborhood or one street. Because I did speak, I will open that up if the council wants to add something, Councilman Hicks?
Yeah, thank you, sir. So the question that I had was, even though everyone has the, the right to come and speak on any item related to the city at the podium, I, have we or should we have some town halls where people can have more of a dialogue on some of the questions that continually come to the podium? As opposed to us having kind of almost one-way conversations, have a dialogue to address the questions so that we can have open, transparent conversation, what we can, what we can't do? Just a thought.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do appreciate your response on behalf of the council, but today, I just couldn't pass without saying something. You know, people come up here, meeting after meeting after meeting, and just because you say it a thousand times, doesn't make it true, and especially in a political season, doesn't make it true. And, you know, and to say that we don't care, you, you, you have no right to speak, speak on what you want to say for yourself, but certainly don't speak on what you, you want to say for us as far as what we care or don't care about. We work very hard, we just don't complain, we, we do a lot of things outside of these hours, and, and some of us still work, and we do care for the city. It's just that a lot of things that people get up here and say is just false sometimes, and you don't, you don't know what you're talking about. And it's unfortunate that you use this and your right to speak and, and just, and, and to really put a black eye over us, the city, for which you're still here at, and we do the best that we can, no one is perfect, but I don't like people to get up here and just flat-out lie, and again, for political reasons. And don't try to win on that, win on your own merit. And as far as town halls, my thing with that is, people that do come up with the same questions and all that, people are looking for different answers, and if it is not true, whether it's a town hall or here, I don't think that's going to stop. But I do believe in town halls when it comes up to special projects and things like that. But to say, you know, to respond to people who keep coming up, if people, some people just don't want to accept the truth or the answers, and, and I'm just being frank and honest about it, but I do support it when the need arrives. Thank you.
So I, I just wanted to piggyback off that and then the comment that Councilman Hicks made. I do know there was a lot of interest in last week's topic, All Things Water, and there will be more of those. We did ask our Director of Public Works to work with our cable department to, to put that presentation on cable TV as well. So we have more information to give the residents that couldn't attend the meeting, or I understand that there are residents who couldn't see the screen. So we are working on putting out an informational series on those things, and I do, so we are, we are working on that. And with, in regards to the town hall, I will agree with Councilwoman Hoag. We have had town halls in the past on this particular issue, and the issue keeps coming up because, as she mentioned, oh, sometimes the residents just want to keep asking the same question until they get a different answer. I don't necessarily know if a town hall would be helpful, given that we are going to be doing more of the presentations that are committed of a whole and putting information out on the city's cable channel, but again, we could always talk about it as a council and, and figure out which direction we want to go. I just wanted to put that out there, we are, we are putting information out on, on cable of what was discussed on All Things Water. Councilman Haynes?
Yes, I wanted to say that I did notice the seating issue in the council chamber, but a lot of the problem was, there were people with coats and purses on chairs, and I also was directing some people to sit in some of the chairs, but I think some people have an issue with sitting so close to other people, and I think that's going to be an issue here. I see some people just kind of spread out because, I guess, there's still the fear of viruses and things like that, but there were some spaces there, I was noticing that, and some people opted to stand up instead of sitting down, even though there were some seats. And I pay close attention to that because I'm always conscious of people standing at the door, so there were some open seats, they all weren't filled. And if I'm not mistaken, I think those chairs move, you know, so if you are not comfortable with someone that close, you can move over. And in addition to the town hall, I agree with you all about the issue-oriented town halls, but what I'm concerned about is the excessive bullying, if you will, like this is an us-against-them type thing, like we are the ones that's trying to get you all, and you all are the ones that are trying to save the residents from getting whatever. This does not create a healthy environment for our city, and we need to create that. And if it's a town hall that will do it with an issue, bring an issue. I've always been taught, and I taught my kids, to attack the issue and not the person or the character of a person. I'll say this just commonly, you don't really know me, but what you do need to know about me is that I do care, and we all do care. And when you put out things, misinformation about people and about their character, you need to be very, very careful what you say. And if you are so good at what you do, then I would suggest that you join somewhere, a committee, an organization in this city where you can be helpful, and when you attend those committees, that you're not hurting or scaring the good people off. Because we have places where we have some events where some people come and make statements, and they're scaring the good people that really want to do things. And we don't want our residents in fear about coming somewhere because we have bullies or people saying ugly things. So if you have nothing good to bring to the table or to the room, don't come in the room, or don't come to the table, and I'll strongly say that because we need people that are going to help move Southfield forward. And I would say this when I'm not up here, I've been saying it, and I didn't just say it with my words, I have been committed to the city in doing deeds, and I'd like to see more people do deeds instead of complaining and not just talk about getting up here to do it, do it while you're out there. Be recognized for doing good, because I'm fed up with it. Don't talk about me, talk about what you do, and when you talk about what you do, do it, because you don't have to talk about it, people will see it. Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
Well, there's two ways to go with this thing, we, we're going, I'm going to tie this back to the boards and commissions. If you're interested in finding out specifically how the city works or a specific issue, we have a board, we have about 26 boards and, and our commission, submit your application, and I will make sure you, you, you can get assigned to the board or commission you're interested in, if there's a specific issue. So that, that right there gets to the, to the answer of the flow of information that comes out to, to various... comes out to, to various citizens and you can hone in and start, by, by being on a board and commission, you can start producing an answer to whatever problem we have in this city. So, that, that's answered that question. But with respect to, uh, town halls, if there's ever a critical mass that's requiring a town hall, I will definitely support a town hall, a specific, if there's a critical mass that's dealing with any issue, a town, town hall can almost be an automatic because that, that is one way of making sure that we, uh, are addressing it. But town, we, the other, and I'm, I'm sure everybody here is perhaps aware of this, but we have numerous cases of communicating with the public. One is obviously this, uh, council meeting. We have cable TV, Channel 15, here in the city of Southfield. We have, uh, the Southfield Sun, the Southfield Sun comes out every Thursday. And also, we have, uh, uh, just other communication methods. I think all, every council member has a telephone that's assigned to them and, and/or you can just call the city and, and you can request that, um, councilman or councilwoman, uh, get back to you and they, the city, whoever, the, uh, the clerk answering their phone will make sure you are identified, that you are requesting a, a callback, so. But I'm gonna go back to advertising for our boards and commission. If there's something you, you're really concerned about, if, even if it's your taxes and obviously if it's a deer in the street or if it's the, uh, uh, name, name any board or commission, just please submit your application and you can do it electronically or you can call the council member and we can, uh, uh, make sure we, uh, we, we will get back to you, so. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
I just want to add that, um, the question about Circle Drive sewers has been answered probab- I will just add that the question about Circle Drive sewers has been answered probably 20 times and, um, recently it was posed in a FOIA request and that answer was sent out by the city clerk. I don't know why this continues to come up every meeting. There were no sewers on Circle Drive. The residents in 1999, 2000 said they didn't want a sewer line. No sewer line was built and no sewer line was replaced 'cause there was nothing, uh, removed 'cause there was nothing to remove. I hope that we don't have to answer this at the next meeting and the meeting thereafter.
You will.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Councilman Cruz?
Good evening, everybody. I don't have anything else to say 'cause I'm not gonna belabor, but it's already been said. Um, all I want to say is that, um, that I believe and I support all the things that were said by my colleagues today. I think you've heard our position and I hope you really do understand that we are doing everything we can all across this city and you can see the outcomes. So, it's, it's very hard for me to listen to folks that's, uh, complaining about things because it's local to them when we gotta look at things from a higher perspective and try to cover, you know, as many issues throughout the entire city, not just in your neighborhood every day. And so, speaking of that, I think you can see, we got a long agenda here tonight, so, um, I hope that we can get to that as we continue again to work on issues across this city that we all care about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council President, can I speak to something?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, I just want to, um, just clarify, uh, for the mayor's comments that he just made, that the FOIA request was received in our office and we have his prepared answers just complete as of last Friday, so we haven't sent him that information as of yet, but that response is gonna be prepared tomorrow. So, I just don't want any misunderstanding on the record. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right, council, next we have minutes and I want to, um, just quickly go over them. The minutes for Item C, the special meeting minutes of January 17th, we had revised minutes on our place this evening, and then I'm gonna ask that we pull the minutes of January 21st.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve Committee of the Hall minutes for January 6, 2025, regular meeting minutes for January 13th, 25, uh, special meeting minutes for January 17th, 25, with corrections.
Support.
All right. We have a motion by Councilman Hicks, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve the Committee of the Hall meeting minutes of January 6th, the regular minutes of January 13th, and the special meeting minutes of January 17th that have been revised. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we get to our consent agenda and these are items that are considered routine, non-controversial or have previously been discussed. Council, do you wish to have any items pulled for further discussion? All right, council, we do have an item that we did add, which would be Item K, which is the approval to utilize the opioid settlement funds. Um, and I just, I will just give a brief overview since, um, this was not on the agenda for those who looked at it online. The city is party to several settlement agreements involving the opioid manufacturers and the city is going to be using some of that money. We're asking for $40,000 of the money to be used to distribute, um, part of it would be 6,000 of this money will be reimbursed to the fire department for 41 boxes purchased for all the schools located in the city. The one box is an innovative tool that combines an automatic external defibrillator, an AED, with the capability to administer, um, Narcan, which is a medicine, medication designed to rapidly reverse an opioid overdose. These devices will provide an additional layer of preparedness and safety in the vent, in the event of an opioid overdose. So, we know that there is a, an issue nationwide, so these one boxes will be helping to proactively address the risk of the exposure and overdose. And we're going to be putting those against, in all the schools in the, in the city. So, I just wanted to, uh, put that out, out there for the, the residents since it was not on our original agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Item A, receipt of proposals for tax and water bill, lockbox services, B, Brownfield Plan Amendment Number Two, and Number Three, uh, C, approval to purchase four mobile compatible radios for new ambulances and fire prevention vehicles, D, receipt of biz for six new Bullard thermal imaging cameras for fire, E, authorization to purchase a Farber Specialty Mobile Command Center vehicle for the police department, F, authorization to adopt food waste elimination study, G, authorization to participate and implement food waste elimination study pilot program, H, authorization to restore and improve damaged deck at Carpenter Lake, I, approval of a renewal contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan for claims administration services and stop-loss insurance, J, proposed vacation of consent judgment on Northwestern Service Drive, and then K, the approval to utilize opioid settlement funds.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve Consent Agenda Items A through K. Any questions or comments? Um, I would just like it, Madam Clerk noted for the record that for Item I, um, I am an employee of the Blue Cross Insurance Company, however, I had no part in any type of discussion. This is strictly an HR item that is routine in nature.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I guess me too. What he said.
Just for transparency purposes. Um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you very much. Yes. Councilman Hicks? All right, next we have two items to be discussed and/or action. The first item is an amendment to the animal ordinance.
I had moved, we, uh, I'm sorry.
That's the Department of Law.
Did, oh, I'm sorry, what was that, Tom?
That's a Department of Law item.
The zoning amendment's coming at the next meeting.
This is the animal ordinance. So, oh, I don't know who was-
It's, well, as we've been discussing over this past several months, uh, the ordinance, the sea ordinance is covering, uh, where chickens could be in the city, was initially, um, primarily covered in the zoning ordinance. That is going to be amended and deleted, but for tonight, this is going to be under police regulations under, um, the animal ordinance and as we had discussed before with planning, uh, they worked on it diligently to transfer everything over to, um, police regulations. So, the last thing that we did, because council has reviewed this, is that the, we changed or I should say we amended it, the definition section to add the backyard file and this chapter refers to chickens. And other than that, um, we're just asking for approval and introduction, um, of that amendment to the animal ordinance regarding, and also bees were in there also, but that was a while ago, but this was the last.
Right. So, council, I know that this has been discussed, um, a bunch of times. Do we have any other further questions or ready to vote?
Council President?
Yes.
Can I add the ordinance number that's 1805?
Yep.
What was it again?
1805.
Thank you. And, Mr. President, I'd like to move approval of amendment, uh, to the animal ordinance.
Support.
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, uh, to approve the amendment to the animal ordinance. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Chair?
I move, uh, that we introduce ordinance number 1805.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, to introduce ordinance number 1805. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. All right, and next we have a proposed ordinance amendment for, uh, Chapter 101, Permit Review, Inspection and Appeal Fees.
Yes, uh, thank you, uh, Mr. President. Again, this is something that had been discussed over the past several months, starting in Legislative Committee. Uh, this is a proposed amendment to provide for enforcement of those failing to procure, uh, building permits. Um, so there is a higher penalty so that people will be in compliance for public health, safety and welfare. So, we're asking that, uh, council approve this ordinance and then that it be introduced.
Council, do you have any questions? I know, again, this was reviewed.
Mr. President?
I'm sorry?
No, it'll be the next number.
It's gonna be the next number, 1806. All right, Councilman Cruz?
Yep. Um, I move that the proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 101, Permit Review, Inspection and Appeal Fees be approved.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve the proposed ordinance amendment, Chapter 101, Permit Review, Inspection and Appeal Fees. Uh, any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President, I'd like to introduce ordinance number 1806.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hicks, to introduce ordinance number 1806. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, council.
Thank you, council.
All right, next we have, we're up to the council portion.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we approve the travel expense report for Councilman Hicks to the MML Committee Kickoff Meeting in Lansing, January 21st.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haines, to approve the travel expense of Councilman Hicks to attend the MML Kickoff, uh, Committee Kickoff in Lansing on January 21st. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council comments? Councilman Brightwell? Do you have any comments for this evening?
Uh, yes. I would like to just reiterate that the, for veterans, if you need your, uh, the VA, the Veterans Administration will pay for your emergency visit to, uh, a hospital here, wherever you're located. Uh, you have to be associated with the VA for their medical care, but if you have an emergency, you can go to, uh, DMC or whatever, Corwell or Providence and the emergency payment will be paid for by the VA, but you have to notify them within 72 hours of being admitted or, or, or after, uh, being, uh, served by the, the, by the, uh, emergency room. Um, and you can reach, I will, you can reach me here with respect to the info, I'm gonna give you a number that you can, that you have to, um, call the VA Central Services. The number is 1-844-724-7824, 7842. That is to have the VA pay for your, uh, emergency care at a private hospital. The other point I want to bring up that is good for veterans is that they are now taking a spring, they are accepting applicants for the spring, spring, spring parenting program. And this program will run from March 6th through June 5th. It's a parenting program for veterans and, or people who, uh, who take care of kids from, uh, the age of five through 12 and it's a parenting program offered in Oakland County and Pontiac. And it, it is, they will cover, you know, communications, handling, emotions, working through challenging behavior and much more. And this is for veterans and or caregivers for veterans. To enroll in this program, you would have to contact the registration desk, vest at the nurturing parent program, 947-232-7846. This is a parenting program for veterans, uh, and also those who are caregivers for kids of veterans. And it's also for foster parents. So, if, if you, if this is something you might be interested in, call that number and register. It's, it's a program where, and, um, they will meet on a regular basis between March and June at 5:30. I'm just gonna give a highlight here that night. Um, dinner will be provided, dinner will be provided at each meeting. Transportation will be provided, but there are distant restrictions- Transportation will be provided, but there are distant restrictions. This is just some highlights here for you, for you, just in case you're interested, and obviously talk to them and you drill down on all the other details. It's for children between the age of five and twelve. For children, if you have children, and this is a really good program, if you have children four or under, they will also provide daycare at this particular project. So, they're trying to reach out for every one of veteran who has, who has some issues here. That number again is nine four seven two three two seven eight four six. Although you may not be a veteran, but you might know a veteran, just pass this info on, allow them to reach down into the details of this program. And only forty-eight percent of eligible veterans utilize all the benefits available to them, and they have some excellent benefits. This is, this is one that really reaches out to the veterans who are having issues of parenting. And I can tell you that, being a former PTA president for Cash Tech, when I offered a program of parenting at our weekly, our monthly PTA meetings, the room was packed. Everybody wanted, wanted to know how to parent, bad parent better, or do better. So, if nothing else, just pass the info on, if it's not for you, but you could pass it on to someone who knows a veteran. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Haynes?
Real quick, just want to remind everybody, I think we're gonna be off, are we gonna be off of the presidency or something? Yeah, that week, the nineteenth, I believe, it's Jazz and Blues at the library. Really nice to come out and to have a change of scenery from the cold weather at home and just go out and come to the Jazz and Blues. It's gonna be a real fun time. If you remember, it's different prices, so just support the library. Also, just want to give a shout out to Levy Middle School. We had a great opportunity last week to go to the, attend the Great Shake. We have so many good volunteers, and it was just great to see parents and business people in the community take time off work to come out and support the school, and that's like just great when we're talking about things that we do in the community. Some of us on the council have done this several times. This was my first time doing it, and this is how we really show that we care too, and it's fun. It's not just we do it because we're up here. We enjoy supporting the kids and pouring into their lives positive things, and it was just a great experience, they're doing such a good job with the kids over there. And I think it's so, it's so important what you say, and also what you say to children to encourage them to do better, and it was just a nice, fun time. Also, just wanna, just let a special person know, Rosemary Allen, mostly everybody knows about her. She, her husband, she lost her husband this past week. Just want to let her know publicly that we care for her, we love her, and if you all know her or don't know, just keep her in your thoughts and prayers. She's always active in this community, doing great things, and just want to let her family know that we support her and we really care for her during this time. And as you all know, this is Black History Month, and the great thing about Black History Month is we educate people about the struggles and the success of African-American people, but the most important thing that we note about this month too is that in those struggles and those successes, all people were united in some causes at all occasions. That means that everybody that was participating in the struggles didn't look like us and all those, also in the successes. So, that's good to remember, because that's what Southfield is about. We're about diversity and about celebrating cultures, and I think that's important, that we remember and respect the cultures of all people, and that way we can have a better Southfield, a better United States. And I just want to read a quote from Frederick Douglass, who I admire, and he said, "I would unite with anybody to do right, and with nobody to do wrong." And I think that fits us well. You know, that's what we're trying to do here, unite to do what's right. Not perfect, but we're uniting to do that. So, those are the things that we remember. Here's a man that's been gone and had a tragic life, but he made the best of it, and even in his struggles, he pushed forward, and that's what we want to see. And I encourage people, I have people that I meet all the time that say, "Oh, you guys did this, and I appreciate it." Come out, come out and, come forth and say that, because, you know, it's good to hear from the yaysayers and not always the naysayers with the things, because we don't want people to think that this is what Southfield's all about. You know, we want, we like the good faces too, because you represent Southfield just as much as we do, and I know you care just as much as we do, and I'm gonna continue saying that, and I hope that you all do the same. Thank you very much.
Councilman Cruz?
Uh, no, I have nothing for this evening.
Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, sir. A couple of quick things. I was watching the news, either last week or the week before, and I saw several firemen on TV, and I was like, "Well, what's going on?", because, you know, they had the Southfield jackets on, then I saw the Southfield truck. I was like, "Well, what happened? Major activity?" Well, they were providing support to a neighboring municipality, and it was just, you know, you would have just, by the way they saw and how they represented us, you were thinking something was happening here. But I just want to say thank you for all that you all do, because, I don't know about you all, but when you stand outside, even for a few minutes, you know, I'm running to a car, running to a building, where these guys are running into the cold with cold water and doing what they do. So, I just want to say thank you to them. Echoing on what Councilwoman Haynes mentioned, you know, it is Black History Month. We have a lot going on in our country right now. Growing up here, Southfield was diverse, and the diversity, I believe, helped me become more empathetic and sympathetic to other cultures, other religions, other everything. And I think it's made me a better person, which is why I stayed and raised my children here. And so, with everything that's happening, you know, you know, there's been a lot of talk about DEI. Well, there's a lot of, I encourage folks to stop using the acronym, because I think it minimalizes what the, what the intent of those words. I am supportive of diversity. I am supportive of equity. I am supportive of inclusion. And I would say to those, everyone has their own opinion, but for those who may be opposed, don't say, "I'm opposed to DEI." Say with your chest that you are opposed to diversity, that you're opposed to equity, that you are opposed to inclusion. By saying that, I hope you record yourself and repeat it back, because in saying those things says a lot about who you are or are not as a person. Again, you're entitled to your own opinion, but if we're trying to become a better society, we need to be more compassionate and caring of each other. Thank you. Oh, and February is also Heart Awareness Month. Go get your heart, blood pressure checked out, and encourage somebody you love to do the same. Thanks.
Councilman Hoag?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too echo the sentiments of my colleagues, and just to reiterate a couple of things, my condolences as well to our resident Rosemary Allen, and when people tell us we don't care, you know, we attend a lot of residents' personal events, you know, they invite us out, and with that, we should also remember to lift up Gail Maisy, who comes here all the time and gives us encouragement and hugs, who is a little bit down right now, but I ask for prayers for her, and just to keep her in your thoughts as well. Again, shows that we care. My colleague mentioned volunteering at the schools, you know, we're always reading to students and doing everything, so it really, you know, I can really ignore statements like that, but when we take away from our families and, you know, some of us that still work, we have limited time to do so much, but I'll tell you, this group here, when anything comes up, we're all there, we immediately get on the phone to do whatever, but just because we don't bring the drama, doesn't mean we doesn't, we don't care. So, people need to understand there's a difference. And for those who are still here, I appreciate you for still here, because it's funny how those who complain leave right after they complain. They don't even hear the issues of the city, time after time after time. So, don't get caught up in the drama, folks, that's all I want to say, but really, if you, you really want to know what's going on, just reach out to us, but I can tell you that all of us here, we do a lot for this city, and it tells by when people invite you to their family events, to their homes, that says a lot about our relationship with our residents, and they're not, it's not just the elected officials. It's the administration, it's our attorney, our clerk, our managers of the department, because we do care, unfortunately. Again, we just don't play into the drama. So, I just ask residents to remember that, and again, come and see what we're all about. Ask us questions, come to our committee members, I mean, our committee meetings, and just see, but we, we work very hard, so it's, it's disheartening to hear people that say that you don't care. You could probably disagree with some of our decisions, that's different, but to try to attack our integrity, our characters, that's something different. And so, we just have to put a stop to it. We need to put a stop here, and we need to put a stop to, as my colleague says, bullying, or just all the negativity. We got enough of that in life as it is, just trying to pay our bills and make it in life. We don't need it here where it gets us nowhere, and that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. That's a, that's a tough act to follow. But I, I will concur with everything my colleague said. I just had two, three public service announcements. The most important one is, this Friday is the last day to pay your winter taxes without penalty. The city clerk, uh, sorry, the city treasurer will gladly take your tax payments. I'm sure the city clerk would take them too, but the city treasurer is the official person who will take your tax payments, and again, this Friday at 5:00 PM is the last day to pay those without penalty. The police department has a Citizens Police Academy. They are starting it up again, and they are looking for residents who are interested in getting a behind-the-look scenes of law enforcement operations. The academy will begin on March eighteenth, and it's held on every Tuesday from six to eight thirty. You get an opportunity to engage with officers, learn about police procedures, gain insight into the challenges and responsibilities of modern policing. There's also hands-on demonstrations, crime prevention strategies, and more. Applications, you do have to file an application, they are due by March first, and you can reach out to the Community Policing Department at two four eight seven nine six five four zero zero, again, two four eight seven nine six five four zero zero for an application and to learn more about the police academy, the Citizens Police Academy. And just also, last public service announcement, when there's snow and ice and sidewalks and streets become icy, please make sure that you're shoveling, you're salting. I go walking every day. I actually slipped several times this weekend, so did my daughter and a couple other people, and there were some spots where we had to call the property owners. Doesn't matter if you're a resident, if you're a business, if you don't think it's your responsibility, it is. You know, we don't want anything bad to happen, you know, some, someone, the wrong. Last year, someone I know slipped on the ice and needed surgery to, with a screw in her ankle, and I'd rather not have to know of anyone else who has to go through that. It was, you know, it took a lot to, to get her back on her feet, and we just want to make sure that our residents, our guests, our, our visitors are, are safe. So, please, you know, I understand that some people are having a hard time finding rock salts. I understand that the business Costco in Southfield has some, but also we have a number of hardware stores and other places that you can buy rock salt, please. You know, even in the, in the, if it gets warmer during the day and it looks like it's melting, it may freeze overnight, and then in the morning, you're back to square one, so please put salt out. I'm sure, as Councilman Hicks mentioned, our, our fire department does not want to be responding to any slip and falls on the ice, so they have, they have better things to do, so please be mindful. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, I want to follow up on a couple of things I heard, starting with last Friday, I had an invitation to go to Thompson International Academy, and I met with the fourth graders in Ms. Torline's class. The kids were absolutely wonderful. Their questions, their attentiveness, they had all kinds of questions about government, and it was really a pleasure to spend a little over an hour with these students. And as, picking up on something Councilman Hicks said about diversity, we do honor and celebrate our diversity in this community, so today, you may have noticed that there's a different flag flying out front. We had a ceremony today by the Southfield Albanian Community. This is, February nineteenth is their Independence Day, and so for two weeks, between today and a week after the nineteenth, we'll be flying the National Albanian Flag out front. The ceremony was really very nice, and again, very well attended at noon today. Also, I want to mention that you probably noticed that the lobby is looking a little bare. We're in between art shows, we, I've sent all of you the flyer on Convergence. This is a celebration of art of, again, a mixed group of local artists, including one of our favorites, Hubert Massey, who has several pieces, and one is out for restoration in the city. So, the program was, the Meet the Artists reception was scheduled for this Thursday, however, due to, we're supposed to get a pretty nasty snowstorm, the prediction is, so it's been postponed for one week, so it'll be Thursday the twentieth. And again, it'll be in our lobby, it's open to the public, it's free, six to eight PM, come and hear the artists talk about their art, as well as you can, opportunity to meet the artists. And so, again, that'll be Thursday the twentieth from six to eight PM in the lobby, and flyers are out in the lobby. So, thank you for allowing me to share those things, and Happy Valentine's Day to you all, if there are any romantic people out here.
You had to bring that up, didn't you?
Alright, thank you. City Administrator?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to thank council tonight for your support on the deputy business development officer's position, the appointment there, as well as the deputy public works director. A lot of comment the last couple of weeks, a number of executive orders that have come out, and we have, you know, by way of our federal grants, we are obligated to comply with those. A lot of uncertainty in what some of those meant. We're still waiting for direction, but let me just state this, we still have a diversity and equity inclusion program within the city of Southfield. It is housed in our human resources. We focus our efforts there on staff training and education, better understanding, the Supervisors Academy. I'm very pleased with what we've accomplished the last three years there, and we will continue that commitment. As we see things play out nationally, and, you know, a lot of these things appear that they're aimed at dividing us, it may unders more than ever that we better understand each other and know how we can work together as a team. You folks have a very tough job. You know, we make decisions, you are running a hundred and eighty million dollar a year corporation, all funds. You have five hundred and fifty-plus employees, you have over seven hundred retirees. Keeping all of that going takes a lot. My team, my managers, when we present our write-ups to you, we present a background statement, we give you the fiscal impact, and we make a recommendation. And, and I say this for the general public to understand this. And I say this for the general public to understand this. I started my career when we were still communicating by print, maybe two times a year. We weren't televising our council meetings back in the day. We didn't have social media and all the multiple plat, platforms. And there are, but never, there's never been so many ways to communicate with folks. But for all of us knowing what the truth is, I mean, researching and knowing what's presented. And again, my team does its best that when we're presenting council, we're trying to give you a history, we're trying to give you some facts and present things honestly. At the end of the day, that's all I or my managers have, is our ability to be honest. So I'll leave you with this thought, we live in a world that if you did walk on water, and there are times, I think, as an organization, we have walked on water, our critics will still complain for splashing them. So we'll carry forward and do what we must, because it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Attorney?
Good evening, council. I have nothing further to add, except I will be going into closed session and request that it only be limited to city council members, administration, and the mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
I just wanted to just give a little bit of information about what people have been calling to inquire at the clerk's office in regards to filing petitions for running for office for this cycle. Petitions are available for pickup in our office. We have a mayor's, well, a mayor's race, clerk's race, and council races on the ballot or will be on the ballot for this election season. And the deadline to return your signed petitions is April the 22nd at 4:00 PM. So if you need any further information or packet petitions, please visit the clerk's office. I also wanted to just give a fact about the businesses that I see coming to our city. We talk about white tablecloth, but also just restaurants that have waiters and waitresses serving. We have several in the works coming that you'll be very excited about to hear in the public eye. We have restaurateurs and business owners that are kind of being dissuaded, dissuaded from opening downtown, because the leases have increased. And they're looking at Southfield. And so that's a great thing, because I like to spend my money where I live. I love to spend my money where I live. And I love seeing you guys out where I go. And last thing is a fun fact. My daughter graduated from Southfield Lathropin 2007, and her very best friend from Lathropin, her roommate at Michigan State, had naturally conceived identical triplets on December 31st of last year. And that's such a rarity, there's like a one in the eight million chance to have identical triplets. And their mother grew up in this city, her grandparents live in this city. So we'll be hearing much more about it. And so that's a wonderful fact to know, especially during Black History Month. So everybody be safe, and thank you for allowing me to speak.
Mr. Chair, if I could just mention one other thing. We also lost another Southfield resident with the last name of Allen. Newsman Al Allen passed away this week. Veteran newsman, I think everybody's familiar with him. And he was a Southfield resident. So rest in peace.
Nothing from the treasurer. Mr. Planner?
Just a couple of quick things. We'll be bringing you at your next meeting, the 2024 Planning Commission Annual Report. We're doing the presentation on that. We do it about the same time every year. We usually start compiling it in December and then go through Planning Commission, they get to where they're happy with it, then they refer it to council. It is a state requirement that the Planning Commission do a report on the functioning of planning in the city to the elected body every year. So this is fulfilling that function. And so that'll be, that will be coming. And then we are, this week, on Wednesday, we're kicking off the capital improvement program process with the Planning Commission, with their first meeting on that. They have a number of meetings, and it goes to Finance Committee as well, and then it'll come to this body to feed into the budget process. So I just wanted to let you know that's, staff's already been working on it, but the actual review meetings process is going to get kicked off here this Wednesday.
Okay. Thank you. Yes?
I move that we go into closed session to discuss materials that are exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute.
One minute, sir. We have a motion on the floor by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilman Hicks, to go into a closed session pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, Section 8H, 8H, to consider material exempt for discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute, specifically Public Act 442, Section 13, Subsection 1G, information or records subject to attorney-client privilege, FOIA exemptions. Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry. Roll call vote.
Thank you. Councilwoman Banks is absent with notice. Councilman Brightwell?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haines?
Yes.
Councilman Hicks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Yes.
Council President Mandelbaum?
Yes.
We have a call.
All right, we will now adjourn to the other room for our closed session.
I just want to let the council know that the Albanian liquor license that was before you last week, they will be coming back for a club license. They've been directed to work with Attorney King and the city clerk.
We're, we're in a, we're, can we, because we just went into a close, we need to stop all other discussion until we come back out.
I'm just making an announcement, because I forgot to do it when I was talking about Albania early.
All right. So we're, we're going to go to the other room. I know Councilman Brightwell has a comment, but you'll have to wait till after we come out of closed.